Motion for December 7, 2017 to order. Can I please get a roll call from members, please?
Dirk Bowden.
Here.
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Vivian Voss.
Present.
And Janet Leo is absent tonight.
The next order of the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the order.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero, or six to zero with one abstaining.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for November 16, 2017?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Call for vote.
Motion passed, five to zero with two abstaining.
This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not on tonight's agenda. We have two cases. Is there anybody on that list?
No one has signed up.
Okay. That would conclude the public forum. Let's move now to the public hearing. I open the public hearing for case number WS-17-01, approval of a 63-lot subdivision on property zone mixed-use neighborhood, and ask for the staff report.
Good evening, and for the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Joining me this evening are my colleagues Lauren Mikulak, Planning Manager, at the staff table, as well as Dave Brosman, who's our Development Review Engineer in Public Works. So, before I proceed with... I have the wrong presentation. Oh, I'm so sorry. It is, but it's not there.
No, it's not.
Okay. So, let me talk just a little bit about what we're looking at tonight. Let's see. Oh, there it is. No wonder. Okay. So, we have two subdivision cases tonight, which we don't do these very often, so I thought I'd take the opportunity to talk just a little bit about what it is we're looking at. A subdivision is a technical document that looks at the way land is going to be used as far as the physical ownership and development. We can look at things like it reconfigures lots, tracts, establishes parcels for sale or development. It does remove, create, or define property lines. It allows city to evaluate adjacent right-of-way and the requirements for construction on that. And it also allows the city to evaluate civil documents, such as the drainage and traffic. What it does not do is change the zoning. It does not change permitted land uses, and it does not look at site design or building placement. So, with that in mind, I am going to proceed with my presentation. Case number WS-1701 is an application for request of approval of a 63-lot subdivision plat on property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood on the north portion of property addressed as 11818 West 52nd Avenue. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, and the contents of this digital presentation.
So, Nora.
So, again, the property is located within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Again, this is for approval of a subdivision plat on property-zone mixed-use neighborhood, the purpose of which is to create 63 townhome lots and eight tracts, and to prepare the property for development. Because this subdivision exceeds five parcels, it is considered a major subdivision, and Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council. And I would just note of order that a neighborhood meeting is not required for a subdivision So, this is the subject site. It is outlined in red, and north is to the top. 52nd Avenue runs along the northern perimeter. Taft Court runs down the western perimeter, with Tabor Street on the east. It is comprised of 3.91 acres of the original Hans Ranch agricultural property. The original property extended from 52nd Avenue down to Ridge Road, but tonight we're only considering the northern portion of that. The site was most recently used for agricultural purposes, and it does contain an existing house on it right now. Most of the agricultural farm buildings have already been demolished on the property in anticipation of development. The property was rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood in 2016, and the intent of that was to establish and encourage medium-density mixed-use development where residential uses are permitted, also with a limited range of neighborhoods serving commercial and retail uses. However, the property is proposed to be developed residentially. This is a copy of the zoning map, and again, north is to the top. You can see the site located right at this location, 52nd Avenue on the north, Taft on the west, and Tabor Street on the east.
Would it be possible to dim the lights? Sorry. Just to see the screen a little better.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. So, there are the different colors on the map do represent the different zonings in the area. Again, the site we're talking about tonight is zone mixed-use neighborhood, but the different colors represent the other zonings and land uses in the area. So, as an example, to the west, in this purple color, is an RV storage lot and parking for the commuter rail station, zoned IE, which is industrial employment. To the south of the immediate site is the southern portion of the Hans Ranch property, which is zoned mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development. To the east, in this sort of ochre, greeny color, there is a low-density neighborhood developed primarily with single-family and two families. The property there is zoned R2. So, we've already seen a lot of improvement in this area because of the proposed or the coming transit station, and so, for the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail line. A lot of investment was already done by RTD, and that would include a realignment of Tabor Street to the south. There was a traffic signal put in at Tabor and Ridge, the construction of Taft Court between Ridge and 52nd Avenue, and then, of course, construction of the rail line improvements, which are still not operating. Just to take a look at some slides of the area. So, these were actually taken last spring, so the conditions don't look quite like this, but pretty much the same. So, this slide is standing on 52nd Avenue, looking west. This, these improvements over here on the left side of the image is the intersection of the Taft Court improvements with 52nd Avenue. This is looking south, across 52nd, at the existing home on the property. I was out there last week, and there is some demolition going on on the house, and most of the, or maybe all of the farm buildings have been demolished. This is looking south on Tabor Street, and the development property is over here on the right-hand side of the image. This is looking, again, west from Tabor, and all of these buildings that you see in the background have been demolished, and the house is in the process of being demolished as well. And this is farther south, at the Ridge-Tabor Street intersection, just a photo of some of the existing improvements out there. So, we have had several land use cases related to this particular property. The first one was a zone change from R1 to mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use TOD. That was approved by City Council in August of 2016, and it did rezone the northern portion of the site to MUN, as I mentioned before. After that, we had a concept plan that was brought in that was reviewed administratively and approved in March of 2017. The next application was for approval of a two-lot subdivision, which divided the, I guess it was seven acres or so, in half, with the mixed-use neighborhood on the north and the mixed-use TOD on the south. And then, we've, or the application we're talking about tonight is a plat, and the next steps would be for approval of a site development plan, which is being reviewed administratively, which would then proceed to building permit. So, just taking a quick look at some of those documents that were already approved. This is one of the sheets that was included in the plan set for the concept plan. After a property is rezoned to a mixed-use type of zone district, there are certain thresholds, which include if it's over 10 acres, or if it's proposed to be phased, that a concept plan be approved for it. And the intent of the concept plan is to look at sort of general design considerations like access, some preliminary drainage, you know, massing of properties. And in this case, we also laid out the configuration for the location of a new street called West 51st Avenue, which will extend between Taft Court and Tabor as part of this development. And again, there were two planning areas, the one on the north, which is the piece we're talking about tonight, the mixed-use neighborhood, and then the one on the south, which is mixed-use commercial TOD, which is not subject to the application this evening. The use approved for the northern planning areas was up to 80 townhouse units. And on the southern portion, we're looking at 250 multi-unit apartments or 60 townhome So, this is a sheet out of the subdivision plat that was approved, I guess it was just a few months ago, in June of the summer, and it divided the property into two pieces, with the mixed-use neighborhood on the south, the mixed-use TOD on the bottom, with 51st Avenue being approved for future construction. In addition to the dedication on 51st Avenue, there was also 11 and 1/2 feet dedicated for Tabor Street. And again, this subdivision that was reviewed previously is consistent with not only the zoning, but then that concept plan. So, the next application in the process will be site development plans. We do have one in process for the north lot, and that is being looked at administratively, and it does correspond with this plat. So, that brings us to the current application. This is a two-page subdivision plat document. And again, the purpose of a subdivision plat is not to review specific site plan details, but rather to confirm property boundaries, access, right-of-way easements, and so on. So, the first page is what I like to call the declaration page, or the title page, and it contains kind of the standard declarations. It's got legal descriptions on it. It has signature blocks, recording notes, and so on. The second page is really the meat of the subdivision request. So, this illustrates the proposed layout of the northern parcel. Again, it's about 3.9 acres in size and zoned mixed-use neighborhood, and it shows that the proposed townhouse development, this is north with 52nd Avenue at the top, Taft Court over here on the left-hand side, or the west, Tabor Court, or excuse me, Tabor Street over here on the east, and then 51st Avenue, which is not built yet on the south end. They are showing 63 townhomes, which are shown grouped into structures containing from two to five units. Each of the units will be on its own lot, and it shows circulation through a private street system that comes off of Taft and off 51st Avenue. There are also eight tracts that are being created by this application, and they each have a different function within the subdivision. Tract A, which you can see labeled, oops. There we go. Tract A, which is the street system basically that comes north off of 51st and connects with linear streets up to a parallels, or excuse me, a perpendicular street accessing Taft, and it provides the internal circulation and the parking for the individual units. It also has a pedestrian access at this location, connecting the internal drive up to 52nd Avenue. Tract B contains the major open space area on the lot, which is in this area right here, and it will have meandering walking paths with landscaping in a north-south configuration through the interior of the site. Tract C is down here at the bottom, and that is the westernmost detention pond, with another detention pond located to the east, identified as Tract D. We also have tracks E, F, G, and H, which are at the corners, the four corners of the subdivision, and do dedicate just a little tiny piece of right-of-way in each instance to accommodate accessibility improvements for the surrounding streets. So, again, the primary access points are from Taft Street and 51st Street. There is no access to Tabor, and there are east-west pedestrian connections from the interior drives to the external public streets. And so, those are shown in this area and in this area. As previously noted, the property will be, or the development property, I guess, will have public streets on four sides, northeast, south, and west, except for Taft Court, which is currently constructed. All will have public improvements installed, including a detached sidewalk, a tree lawn, and on-street parking. So, as part of the review for this, we did look at a drainage report, and any time vacant land is developed, historic drainage patterns must be preserved, and the flow entering and released from the site be maintained with existing conditions. Public Works did review a drainage report that has been approved, and they have ensured that these historic and developed flows are being taken care of. Basically, the historical flows are carried over land with proposed curb and gutter on the south side of 52nd Avenue and the west side of Tabor, and then will flow into a storm sewer system at Ridge Road. And again, the site does drain towards the southeast, where we've got two detention ponds which intercept the flow and go into each other. Anytime we have a residential subdivision, there is a requirement for a parkland dedication, and when land is not dedicated for a park, a fee in lieu of parkland is required, and the Parks Department has indicated that fees will be required with this application, and they're in the amount of about $2,000 per unit, and they need to be paid prior to the plat recording. So, we went through our standard referral process on this, and all of the responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements at the developer's expense. Urbetta Fire is requesting three additional hydrants to be installed. Both Century Link and City of Urbetta have no concerns with the application. Valley Water can serve with improvements installed. Again, the Wheat Ridge Parks Department is requesting fees in lieu of land dedication. The Wheat Ridge Police can serve the property. Public Works has reviewed and approved the plat and the drainage report, and Xcel Energy can serve the property. Staff is giving a recommendation of approval for the following reasons. All requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. The plat will facilitate redevelopment and is consistent with the zoning and concept plan for the site, and all agencies can serve the property. We have listed four recommended conditions, which were outlined in your recommendation for approval. Number one, that minor corrections occur prior to the City Council public hearing. A subdivision improvement agreement be executed with security at plat recording. That the parks' fees be reviewed at plat recording. And finally, that the homeowners' association covenants be reviewed prior to the issuance of a building permit. So, that finalizes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions now.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowden?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. In terms of overflow parking options, what tracts would be available for that in the case of a party or an event from one of these?
Well, the overflow parking, the site accommodates parking for the individual units, both by garages provided on-site, and then the overflow parking occurs on all of the street frontages.
Okay.
So, there are specific parking pullouts on all of those street frontages for visitor parking or what have you.
Okay. That's it. Commissioner Bowden?
Just a question about the access points on Tract A. You mentioned that there would be no access from Tabor onto Tract A. I don't see that specifically ruled out in the replat document, and I do see on the, let me find it, one of the previous, where is it? What's the one we're looking at? Yeah, it's the concept plan, page two of three. There is a proposed access point listed there. So, I'm wondering what sort of assurances we can get recorded that would prevent that access from being there to address any neighbor concerns?
And we've, of course, looked at both access from Taft Court and from Tabor, and apparently the grades on the Tabor Street side don't work to make that connection. If you feel more comfortable about it, you could add a condition that no access be provided from Tabor Street.
Okay.
So, that's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, just because it is noted on the concept plan that there is a potential for that, I'd like, if the intent here is to not provide access to maybe help with the residential, maintain the residential character on the east, I'd feel more comfortable with that type of a condition, so I'll bring that up. Thanks.
Sure.
Commissioner Dorsey?
I have no... I should get...
No questions?
Commissioner Voss?
I have a question as to West 51st Avenue. Is that built by the developer? I see it kind of as part of the SIA, but I didn't know if that was clear.
Yes, that will be one of the developer's responsibilities, is to make that connection between Taft and Tabor.
And that's the only section of 51st Avenue? Is that one?
At this point, yes.
And then, who will maintain that street?
That'll be a dedicated public street, so it'll fall back to the City of Wheat Ridge.
As well as the trees and the landscaping?
Usually, the trees and landscape alongside a dedicated street are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner.
The developer. Thank you.
Commissioner Weaver?
I don't have the size lots in front of me, but when it looks like this, does this mean that many of these will be shared wall boundaries?
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
So, can you just remind me of what the size, for standalone single-family, it would have to be, how many square feet?
Well, it depends on what zone district is.
Okay.
It is, in the R1 zone district, the minimum lot size is 12,500. That's our largest lot, single-family. Our smallest lot, single-family, is called R1C, and that, those are a minimum of 5,000 square feet.
And do we have similar requirements when it's a townhouse situation? I'm sort of picturing shared wall.
Well, they are shared walls, and essentially, the building footprint will take up almost all of each of those spaces.
Okay.
If that makes sense. They will fit right within those, right within those platted lots, and then be butted up to each other in groups, I think I said, of two and five.
So, the ownership is per the living space, not the yard in front of it? So, each one of these?
Yes, I believe the yard in front, or all the landscaping in the development is taken, or will be maintained by the homeowners' association.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have no questions.
I actually had one additional question that slipped my mind. The Tract B open space, how does that line up with the proposed conceptual open space plans that the city presented, I guess it was earlier this year, that would provide some continuous park space from roughly 52nd all the way down to almost I-70?
You know, I will defer to Lauren. She's been involved in that process.
I think you're referencing the vision plan that we presented to you and to City Council earlier this year.
That's correct.
So, that linear park, what we were calling it, is located further west in this subarea. So, this is an amenity that's required by the zoning. It's not formally a part of that linear park. We expect to kick off a planning process for the linear and regional park in 2018. So, it's not in the same alignment, but certainly complements those other improvements we'd like to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Thank you, Ms. Reckert. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? If you could please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Noah Nemers. I'm with Baseline Engineering. Address is 1950 Ford Street, Golden, Colorado. And greetings to staff members here tonight and Planning Commission. We've been working closely with staff since the inception of the project, since early on in the zoning process, and you've probably seen me or some other baseline staff member here over the last couple of years. So, we've appreciated the feedback and the working back and forth with City of Wheat Ridge staff. Special thanks to Meredith and Dave. We've probably worked most closely with those two individuals during this whole process. So, one of the things I just wanted to mention real quick is, you know, I think we've been going back and forth on this project for quite a while, and I think the end result of this project has been very fruitful in terms of what we have here to present to you guys tonight. From a drainage perspective, I think it's a good result. From an architectural perspective, I think we have a good result as well. So, I'm really just here to answer any technical questions. I don't have any formal presentation, but if you guys have any technical questions, I'm here to answer those. So, thank you.
Are there any commissioners that have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to open up the citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak? I'll look through the list, and then if there's somebody that is not signed up, you'll have a chance to speak to. Okay, Patrick Henry, did you want to come forward?
No, I apologize. I was just signing in.
Okay. That's okay.
Wow, this is for two people.
Please, yeah, just then, please state your name and address.
Connie Berg, 5195 Swadley Street. So, I live directly east, and just directly east of the property, one block on the other side of Dennis over there. I didn't really have anything formal prepared. I've just been jotting down here. There's this question of this fees in lieu of land, so it looks like we're waiving the requirements for green space in there if the developer pays enough money. I'm not sure I'm understanding that right, and maybe you don't have to answer.
Typically, Wheat Ridge...
Typically, Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge's open space for development really doesn't have enough land area to make a substantial park. So in lieu of that, we collect fees that then we can make improvements to some of our existing parts in the area, or perhaps by, by new properties.
Okay. And so is this, are we planning, is that the, the little green linear park that we're talking about?
Exactly. Yeah, so if we took a land dedication on, on all of our projects of this size, we'd end up with a lot of really small pocket parks. So our parks department prefers to sort of aggregate those fees and then have a more impactful park facility.
Okay. How many parking spaces are there per unit? Are we looking at the, the two per unit? Or is there one point something because they're a TOD?
My recollection that is that there are two per unit. They're all tucked under garage parking spaces.
Under garage, okay. And then traffic, what, what, how are you going to manage all these cars coming in and out? I know that's, that was something that was on, traffic civil was on the list of things that the subdivision does manage.
Yes, Public Works took a look at the traffic that was produced from this development and didn't find any issues. We have public streets all the way around it to help divert the traffic from this particular development.
You're going to add 120 cars just right there? And somehow everything that's there is just fine?
Well, I apologize. I'm not a traffic engineer, but, or I know our traffic engineers all took a look at this.
Okay, well, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but...
They, they determined that this isn't going to be a major impact to the surrounding roadways.
But, and then this, I know this is a lot of the neighborhoods, neighbors issue is, you're right, they looked at this little tiny pocket, and boy, those 120 cars aren't going to make a difference. But we know of all of these different, how, how are you guys all working together? Are you all working together to make sure that the 120 cars here and the 300 cars over and wherever, and, and all of these, these vehicles that are associated with all this development? How is this all going to get through? I live on 52nd and Swadley Street, and we've got, it's like a racetrack in there. We would love to see more speed humps. We got these great speed humps on, two on Swadley, two on, or one on Sims, and, and we'd love to see them on 52nd because we got cars coming on 52nd through our neighborhood because they don't want to go down Tabor and wait at the light, at the, the tracks. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done as far as traffic.
And we have a process, if, if you wish to make application to Public Works for speed bumps on 52nd Avenue. At some point, I believe that's going to end up being a through street.
Well, it's not going to end up being a through street. Not supposed to be.
It's, yeah, and, and again, you can make application for speed bumps and let the director of Public Works make that call as to whether or not...
I might, I might do that. Let me see if I have anything else. Oh, how wide is 52nd, 51st Avenue going to be?
Way is 63 feet and width.
And how tall are these townhouses going to be?
I believe they're three stories.
Three stories. Okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have Michelle Byer.
Just a point of order. They should be directing the questions to you, which then you relay to staff when the testimony is...
Yes, what we'll do is we'll, we'll have everybody ask their questions, and I'll, we'll keep a tabulation of that. And then after everybody's done asking questions, then we'll go through and we'll make sure that we've answered in some might be, might be duplicate questions. So if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm Michelle, or Shelley Byer, and I live at 11721 West 52nd Avenue, which is basically where 52nd and Sims dead end. I have the horse property at the, at the north end of 52nd. And I don't really have a question, I just have a concern that just as he just pointed out, that 52nd will become a thoroughfare. That's not going to happen if I have anything to say about it. Back in 1993, the city dedicated that property as open space. And I have a special warranty deed and all kinds of legal documents. I've hired an attorney to fight this. And I know that everybody thinks 52nd is going to be the thoroughfare, but we already know that Ridge Road is going to go out toward Road, and DOT is not going to let them make a left-hand turn. It's going to be a right-hand turn only on toward Road. We've got 500 units going into the east of me, which is Arvada. We now have another proposal for 100 units going in on 52nd and Urban. 52nd can't handle all this traffic. So my question is, where's it all going to go? How are we going to make this work? That, I, I don't really have a question. I guess I just have some concerns. But I want you all to know that I will fight 52nd going through until I'm blue in the face because I do have legal documentation from 1993 when I annexed into the city of Wheat Ridge because you all came to me and said you would protect me from the city ever taking that street through. And now I'm having to fight it. And I just think that's really, really sad, that a city doesn't stand up for what they said they would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryant Kincaid?
I'm good.
Okay. Patty Davies?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Okay. Bob Harmson?
I live at 575 Ward Road. I've been in Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County and in that area since 1943. And I think what is going on here is going to be more problems than anything else. And when you put 63 apartments in there, how many are there going to be children living in any of those? 52nd doesn't have sidewalks all the way to Ward Road or whatever, and there's all these kids going to Drake Middle School. And the traffic out there is getting horrendous. And I called for Meredith last week, but I know she was busy, so I called for John Stone. He didn't return my calls, so I talked to Steve Nguyen. I'd like to see a traffic study that's done out there. The traffic has gotten unbelievable. And when they designed and built the train station, I told him I thought they were making a big mistake with putting 50th all the way through to Ridge Road. You got all the parking on the north side of 50th and the train station on the south side. So everybody's going to have to cross a main street to get to the train. And 50th is going to turn into a racetrack when they open it up all the way through. I know 52nd, from what these people have said, has already been that way. Because when Ward Road starts backing up, there was a train at four o'clock this afternoon that had 50 cars and two engines. And you see the people turning around and going down 52nd to get to Tabor so they can get back around. And it's just turned into a, a major mess. And 50th, you got businesses there, there's a fitness center with all kinds of customers coming in and out. There's parking, they talk about street parking. It's a one-lane street if you park on both sides because it's too narrow. And we talked about that when they put it in. Now you're going to have buses coming in to the train station, and that's going to be a problem because you're going to have them coming down Taft Street. And what's, you know, what has been done? And we asked for a traffic study. The Urban Land Use Institute came out and did a study and said that they didn't think that all of this development was necessary. We needed more businesses where there were jobs, not more homes. We've got so many people out there now. You can't, it's almost gridlocked from seven o'clock in the morning until about 9:30 or 10:00 in the morning, and then from four o'clock in the afternoon to six or seven, just like Kipling is. And Arvada has built 3,500 new homes out in Candela, so you've got all of those people coming down. And then they're building a new major apartment complex up on 58th, just two blocks west of Ward Road. So the traffic, and then you got everybody that wants to go to Target to go shopping or whatever, they're going to be using those streets, and they're probably going through the subdivisions over there to get there. And then I look at this deal, and I'd like to know how wide the streets are in between all of these apartment buildings. You say that the, the fire department's approved it. When I did some things at Jolly Rancher, they made me widen the streets and, and make turnarounds at the ends so their big trucks could come in there and turn around. I don't know how you're going to get ladder trucks and stuff if you've got three-story buildings, how they're going to get in there to service it with only one entrance going into that facility. So I think it's a major concern that somebody needs to look at. And it's not only the traffic, it's an environmental problem out there too. When you've got the trains crossing and it takes 15 to 20 minutes sometimes, and you've got all those cars sitting there idling. And the other day, we had an accident up on 58th and Ward Road. Traffic was backed up south, cleared down onto Interstate 70. So when I talked to Steve Nguyen the other day, he says, "Well, we're, we're thinking about a grade change over Ward Road." Well, is that going to be like Wadsworth up in Arvada? I mean, then it's going to take the lumberyard, it's going to take all kinds of businesses out on Ward Road. So I think there needs to be more study done before you start building apartments. I've had several people wanting to buy my property that's just west of this, and they wanted to put 80 apartments on two pieces of property that I have, and I won't sell it to them. I think it's ridiculous. There's no reason to put 80 apartments on some of those pieces of property. We've got too much traffic out there now. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Please refrain from crap, clapping. It's going to take longer for us to go through this process. Thank you. The next person is John Harmanson.
I'm with you.
If, if you wanted to go on the record, sir, you'll have to come to the podium. Okay. Rudy Westner?
I'm with you. I agree with everybody.
Your, your comments will be noted if you come to the podium.
I live at 12101 West 54th Avenue. It's in Arvada, not Wheat Ridge. This development that you're proposing is on the northern edge of the Wheat Ridge boundary. 52nd Avenue, I believe, is in Wheat Ridge. If, if any of you, many of you may know, or if anyone lives up in that area, you should take a drive up there at five o'clock in the afternoon sometime and drive down 52nd and see how long it takes you to get on toward Road going southbound. It's almost impossible. You can't make a left turn without a traffic light, and you don't control the traffic light timing. I think the DOT does that, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's not going to play well because there's no ingress and egress from that area at certain times of the day. And we went to a town hall meeting the other night with Jefferson County Planning Commission about the 100 units on the north side of 52nd Avenue. And the question was asked, do you ever get together with the other governmental entities or who are planning for development and for the ingress and egress? And the answer was simply, no, we never talked to them. That's almost unconscionable to me, that you could plan this in a vacuum and not realize what other people are doing or proposing, and how that's all going to be additive to the, the impact. It's, it's just ridiculous. You've got four, maybe five jurisdictional entities. You people, the city of Arvada, the county of Jefferson County Planning Commission, and maybe RTD is going to have an influence over how traffic is routed to, for their trains. So it seems to me that it was a very nice proposal, ma'am. I enjoyed it. Very good. I don't think it's going to work once you leave the area. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Hey, Garrett Vapp?
I do have a 13-year-old daughter at Drake Middle School, and I've got two more kids coming up. Currently, Jefferson County will not put a bus stop anywhere near Rainbow Ridge. And my daughter has, a couple times, almost been hit by a car already on 52nd. And by putting another 120 cars right there and buses, and no plans for sidewalks on the north side, some improvements on the, on the south side, we're not going to see any idea how we're adding those cars and protecting kids, plus the kids that are already there. And so my question is, what is going to be improvements down 52nd on both sides of the road? Because it's a dangerous thoroughfare when she's going at seven o'clock and she's coming home at 3:30 o'clock.
Thank you.
So I just want you guys to take into consideration, there are a lot of kids in Rainbow Ridge, and if they're going to Drake Middle School, which is the public school, how are you going to protect kids' safety?
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to speak that haven't signed up? I'll start with you.
My name is Jeff Warrington. I live at 5265 Taft Court, which is unincorporated Jefferson County. I did have a specific question about the, the plan document here, but just to echo some of the points about the traffic, and specifically the question about the traffic study. I think the issue that most of the people in the, in the surrounding areas have is, this is one development that's been discussed amongst many. And whenever we attend these meetings, the responses about how traffic will be handled is almost always specifically discussed in the context of that single development, that single amount of cars, parking spaces, et cetera, that that supports. This land itself has a proposed development just south, which is, I can't remember how many units, but more, which obviously would mean more cars and more traffic just from this particular plot of land. In addition to the proposed 100 apartment development, which is, I believe, city of Arvada or Jefferson, no, just Jefferson County, just a bit west on 52nd, north of 52nd. And also, people have referred to developments along Ridge Road further to the east. So, yeah, I mean, I just want to express my personal frustration of the idea that traffic studies have been done and haven't, have been found that there's no significant impact. It just doesn't seem that that is reasonable considering, again, the context of the other proposed developments, and also to echo other people's comments, the fact that we have Wheat Ridge jurisdiction, we have city of Arvada, and Jefferson County. And it does seem like there's not a communication as to how to handle traffic and, and crime or anything else surrounding all these potential developments in this one single area. My specific question was in regards to improvements for this plot. It was said that there would be a sidewalk on the north side along 52nd and the east side along Tabor, I believe, as well as assuming there would be sidewalk on the south side with, with the proposed 51st. There's already a sidewalk on Taft Court, which of course was built for the train station. It was also said that there would be street parking available along all four sides. My question there is, Taft Court is already built with a sidewalk. That is, the street is ingress and egress to the train station. I can't imagine there would be street parking available there unless that's torn up. On the north side on 52nd, as people have noted, there's, it's a single lane on either side. There's no sidewalks. There's really no extra room right now. So if a sidewalk is going to be built and there's going to be street parking available on the north side, I'm wondering whether this particular document reflects that in terms of where the borders are drawn and where West 52nd is noted. Because as far as I can tell, the, the boundary line of the property is essentially where the street ends right now. But I'm not clear on that, which is why I'm asking the question.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Okay, sir, you go next?
My name's Dennis Hatfield. I'm at 5170 Tabor, right across the street from where Hans used to live. The proposals here that you're putting up as far as saying that there's not going to be any access on Tabor... be any access on Tabor, on it and stuff, is there any way of guaranteeing that? Because right now, and I try and pull out of my property, it can take 10 or 15 minutes and stuff just to get on the street, to get out of the neighborhood. Also, I don't know what's being talked between Arvada, between Wheat Ridge, between Jefferson County, as far as water mitigation over there. Since RTD has been there in the last two years, we've had nothing but floods and stuff in the spring. Everyone I know on our street up there is pumping or double pumping with water problems. I mean, it's totally screwed. My, pardon my French, the foundation and stuff on the house to pour, we're going to have to have people come in and pay to fix it. I have lakes that come across my yard. We never had that before, before RTD came in here. We've been putting up this and stuff for two, three years here now. This proposal's going to come in. What are we going to do? Another three years on here? The water problem's got to be addressed. I talked, I had Valley Water and Arvada over today to my house because it's becoming a problem for sewer drainage out of there. The, that old eight-inch main in there and stuff is massive, massively old clay pipe. If they don't do something on the other side and guarantee us they're going to put some kind of drainage in over there and stuff, we're going to have no recourse other than to sue whoever's responsible parties on this. We're trying to get along with everybody on this, but it's becoming impossible. I'm out there scooping two inches of sand out of my driveway from the water and stuff that pours down through my property now. That is a big problem. Thank God my kids are grown now. We know what you're talking about, the problems here. If you've ever been in our neighborhood right there, my house, fence has been crushed four times. My neighbor's house, 5190, right next to us, they have big cement ties put out there to try and keep the cars from crashing through there, no less than six or eight times since, in my current knowledge on it and stuff, that that's been smashed completely in. My son almost got hit there. All right, he jumped up over the metal fence and kept from it. In the wintertime, come to downgrade right there. It's terrible. We don't have any protection right there, and yet I see no proposals on here and stuff to take. If you're going to take our street, okay, we're okay with the fact that stuff that everybody loses a little bit out here to make it better for all the people, but I've seen no big proposal to really open up 52nd on the other side of it. Granted, you've got to give up a little bit of land over there, but that's the only way you're ever going to make it safe. We start having hundreds of kids coming out of there and going over to Drake, it will be on you guys' conscience when those people get hurt, and it will happen. We've had it happen to our own families. I just want you to think about that and stuff. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, sir, you go next. Is there anybody else that, okay.
Hi, my name's Gary Duncan. Address is 5355 Union Way. I'm one lot, one house lot away from being in Wheat Ridge. So, I currently, the address isn't Arvada address. Thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns. Although we live in Arvada, I think it speaks for many residents in our community. Wheat Ridge is important. We give a lot of business to Wheat Ridge, Walgreens, the King Supers on Young Field, the Safeway on Wadsworth. There's, it's a very important component. I echo everything that's been said here by these fine people. Tabor is a major access to 44th and I-70. There are no plans, at least my discussions with, I believe, Meredith, and it's been a couple months, to do anything with Tabor other than a sidewalk on the west side. I-70 backs up now, both directions. Between Kipling, Ward Road, Ridge Road, and 58th, there's over 3,000 multifamily units planned. That's all going to be channeled down into 52nd. You can't get onto Ward Road now off 52nd in the afternoon when the school buses are leaving Drake. I think Wheat Ridge and Arvada are creating a nightmare for themselves, and we're all frustrated with Dr. Cog and RTD, you know, driving our cities to build the ghettos of the future. This is a major problem. I would refer this council to look at the study that was just released by the Federal Transportation Department in November, about two weeks ago. Light rail has been a failure in every major city that has been built in with the exception of five: Philadelphia, Washington DC, Boston, New York, and San Francisco. I think everyone would agree those city cultures are quite different than the lifestyle we enjoy here. RTD's own figures show ridership is 4% and sliding. It's not even keeping up with the growth. So, if anyone believes the train is going to alleviate traffic there in a dream world, we have major problems. Our homeowners association made a presentation to Arvada City Council asking for a comprehensive study between Wheat Ridge, Jefferson County, and Arvada. They told us that was in progress. From what I'm hearing here, I don't think that's quite accurate. CDOT tells us they will not give a light on 51st and Ward Road, even though that's put through. So, all that traffic's going to go down to 52nd or through our neighborhood. I really ask you to reconsider the density that is being proposed in all these developments because you're creating a nightmare. Thank you for your time. Appreciate the input.
Thank you. Please come forward. Oh, yeah, come forward. You're good.
My name is Lynette Gilbert. I live at 11895 West 52nd Avenue. Thank you for letting me talk. I take my dog for a walk. I don't have any children. I have a dog. I run my dog down the street so that I can get her a little walk from the corner of Taft to Tabor, because there's no way that we can make it safely unless we run, because the cars are coming. I've lived here eight years, and I used to be able to walk her down that street. Now, I run her, and excuse me, it's my new dog. I run her because my old dog is gone. I'm very concerned about the safety of children, because I'm sensible, and I'm worried about the safety of me and my dog. I'm concerned about the safety of the kids that have to walk. When I come out of my driveway in the morning, I'm a nurse, there's a child standing on the corner. Sometimes I don't even see her, and she's 13 or 14 years old. She's pretty big. So, I'm very concerned about what we're doing with that area, and I'd really like, even though I think it's Arvada's responsibility for the north side of 52nd, if I'm not mistaken, to put in a sidewalk, but I'm also concerned about what we're doing on the other side. I'd really like to make sure that we have a huge sidewalk if we're going to do something with that development, just so we can come and go down the street together and safely. And so, that's all. I'd just like you guys to know. It's really difficult now, and there's no development. There's nobody living in that house anymore. There's nobody there, and there's a lot of car traffic. And I would also just mention, thank you for the suggestion about the hump. If we could have five humps down that street at night, as you hear these cars going and motorcycles going, and they are doing 50 to 70 miles an hour down 52nd, they just think it's something fun to do, and it's scary. I'm amazed that I never hear somebody crying because somebody got hit, so we have to really watch for that. So, please, if you'll consider safety first. It's just the smartest thing we can do, but it's really scary in that area right now, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Have you already spoken?
No.
Okay, come forward.
My name is Terry Foulke, F-O-U-L-K-E. I live at 5274 Taft Court, which is north of this proposal. Thank you for allowing me the, the opportunity to speak to you. I, I just want to applaud everybody that has spoken so far and go on record by name and address as supporting everything that has been said tonight. But one of the things that, that I would like to comment, to just make a comment regarding the, the traffic that, that is going to impact our community in that area, and I think it's been very eloquently said so far, is exactly what's going to happen. I was at that meeting with Jefferson County the other night, looking at the proposal that they want to do in, in dropping all of that traffic back out into 52nd, which is going to be just a little bit west of where this one's going to happen. We've got those developments east of where, of where we're at now that's going to be happening in the same way with, with 52nd, because that's, that's going to be a major route. We've got the potential of right across the street from this development of a, possibly another development going in there within the next year, year and a half or so probably, and they're going to dump out onto 52nd Avenue. At that last meeting, I asked a question of the planner from Jefferson County if he had ever been up against a situation like this, of which there was a roadway development, roadway couldn't handle what was going to, what the impact was. They were going to do all the great studies that everybody claims that, that they're going to do, and of course, we all know that with RTD, when you move into an RTD lot or close to an RTD lot, nobody owns a vehicle. So, the developers, or the, the person from Jefferson County said, "Yes, I've come up against this before." So, I asked him, I said, "In light of all of the studies that you've done, has Jefferson County ever denied a proposal?" And his answer was, "No." So, my question to you guys, if it doesn't start with city government standing up for the citizens, listening to us, and shutting something down for, for the public safety and welfare, then where does it start? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the audience? Seeing none, I will close the citizens forum, and now I will have the staff answer, go through this list of applicant, or questions from the public. And so, it seemed like a lot of more 52nd Avenue as far as traffic, traffic reports, and my understanding is tonight, we're, we're only approving the subdivision. At what, at what point was the, does the traffic report come into play? Is that at the administrative process, or is that back when we looked at the reasoning?
Well, one thing I'd like to mention is, we have been meeting with the City of Arvada. We have talked about traffic in the area and improvements. We, we, both of the communities have additional future development being proposed to the east, and we have met and talked about improvements to the existing streets. I don't know if there's any sort of collaborative traffic effort that's being made.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's disappointing to hear that that was the response from Jeffco that we have been coordinated. We have a draft intergovernmental agreement that's being reviewed by all three jurisdictions right now, and we recently executed a memorandum of understanding, another kind of agreement with RTD, to continue to have the collaboration that we also recognize is required in an area like this with so many different jurisdictions involved. So, that's always the starting point, to make sure we're sort of in the spirit of collaboration, and then getting into the nitty-gritty of sort of the dollars and cost share and doing the traffic studies. As it relates to 52nd Avenue and some of the improvements that are being mentioned here tonight and have been mentioned frankly for several years, sort of ever since we knew the station was coming. As the commission is aware, the city voters approved the 2E bond about a year ago now, and 52nd Avenue is quickly rising as one of the highest priority investments and sort of lowest hanging fruit for us to, to complete, certainly on the south side where Wheat Ridge owns the right-of-way. The right-of-way here is split in half, so from the center of the road south is Wheat Ridge, from the center of the road north is mostly Jefferson County with a little bit of Arvada. That kind of improvement on 52nd is included in that intergovernmental agreement. We are preparing a request for qualifications as we speak to get an engineer on board to design the improvements on 52nd, which would include a detached sidewalk extending essentially from the subject property to Ward to provide some of those pedestrian safety improvements that we know are critical in this area. In terms of sort of an overarching traffic study, we did complete one maybe a year or two ago now to determine if there was a signal warranted at the intersection of Ridge and Ward. As a couple folks, I think, alluded, CDOT is resistant to signal there, and the challenge with working with CDOT, as we've learned on other roads, is that they won't entertain a signal until the existing trip generation sort of requires a signal. So, they don't like to look at predictions. So, we're, one of the other consultants we've engaged as a part of the bond will sort of continually analyze the trip generation counts that are occurring as these developments are coming online with the hope that we can go to CDOT the day we hit that warrant and get that additional signal. So, we are certainly as aware and concerned about the need to distribute this traffic appropriately. I think there was also a mention about a separated crossing of the railroad and Ward Road. I'm not a traffic engineer, I should disclaim, so I'm way outside my expertise, but we did set the station far enough back, you may recall, to allow there to be the appropriate grade to let the lines go either over or under the road. So, that's been in consideration. It's a significant project. It's a state highway, and for that project in particular, I think the City of Arvada is aware that it's largely folks from Arvada and from the Candell's Development that was mentioned that are creating additional volumes on Ward, so they have a vested interest. They have acknowledged they have a vested interest in solving that separation, which I think will go a long ways to helping encourage CDOT to put the signal in there. So, we are actively working in this area and doing those more comprehensive studies, particularly with sort of the benefit of those bond funds and the ability to finally sort of expend some funds here, which we haven't had the luxury of doing over the last several years.
And then, do you know, there was some comments on street parking?
Well, there, there is parking proposed on all four streets. There is existing parking on Taft that is accommodated by parking pullouts, and that will be the same kind of design on 51st, and then also parking on the south side and east side of Tabor.
Just to address maybe one of the citizen comments, there isn't room today. If you looked at it today, it would feel uncomfortable, but the previous plot actually dedicated the right-of-way, if I'm correct, sufficient to accommodate that on street parking. So, the road will appear to get wider as the developer completes those improvements.
Okay. And so, the street width is still being, that sounds like that's still being worked out for 52nd?
No. I mean, what they will be responsible is for improvements from the centerline south, and they will be installing curb and gutter, taking care of the ditch, and widening that pavement section to include the separated sidewalk with a tree lawn.
With the detached, okay.
Yeah, with a detached walk, yes.
Okay. Can I, can I get a clarification on that real quick? So, you're saying, what you're saying is, on the subject property on the south side of 52nd, there, there will be parking pullout or parking area, and then also a detached sidewalk?
With a tree lawn.
With a tree lawn, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, some of the, the issues, as far as traffic speed humps, how does that relate to this particular case along, I'm assuming along 52nd?
Well, given the traffic load currently, as everybody's pointed out along 52nd Avenue, the likelihood that the speed humps would be approved is low. Residents always have the ability to make application with the Department of Public Works for speed humps on their roadways. Again, given, given the traffic on 52nd, that's probably unlikely.
What, what is it classified right now?
I think that's a collector's street.
Okay.
I'm not positive on that.
And then, there were some questions brought up about access on Tabor by Mr. Hatfield had brought. Mr. Hatfield had brought that up.
As proposed, there is no access provided to Tabor, but I think Mr. Bucknam had a good suggestion that that be made a condition that could be worked into the motion.
Okay.
And just to clarify also, there's a couple-foot grade separation per the design, the construction design, so that won't occur. But we could certainly add a note to the plat to ensure that.
There was something about, and this is getting way off topic, water mitigation and sewer pipes. I mean, that's all Public Works. I don't know how that relates to this project for the subdivision plat that we have before us tonight.
Yeah, and that's the first that we've, from Public Works' standpoint, have heard about that.
Okay. Could that gentleman be pointed to Public Works and have a discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff and the commissioners?
Well, I sort of have a question for you, actually.
Okay.
Is there a way that, because a lot of the questions that have been asked tonight don't necessarily have to do with this subdivision, but about, you know, I'm hearing a collective, who can we talk to? As in, right hand is not talking to left hand, and, you know, there's water issues, there's traffic issues. If there is some way that, regarding all these issues, that we can suggest where people can call, or whether it's a water issue or a traffic issue, does that make sense? It feels like...
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, generally, it sounds like a lot of these are probably towards Public Works type of questions.
Is that, is that true? So can a person call Public Works and regarding the water, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If somebody contacts us pertaining to traffic, or stormwater, or groundwater, or any of it, we can certainly direct them where they need to, where they need to get their answers.
Okay. All right. So if I'm a private homeowner and I'm dealing with this kind of water thing, I can call? Okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
But, yeah, just to remind the commissioners, we're just voting on the subdivision plat. Any other questions?
I do understand that we're just voting on the subdivision plat, but it seems to me, with all these citizens concerned, traffic, water, safety sidewalks, lack of sidewalks, that we're putting this subdivision before the infrastructure gets done and taken care of, and then becomes a safe, secure development. Is there any way that that can be reversed, so that we're not putting in homes in traffic when the issue of all of that hasn't been addressed?
My understanding is that the process is, we approve the subdivision and then plat, and then there's an administrative process for the site review that addresses all those issues.
Okay, then my question would be, how soon is building starting on this subdivision versus these outside issues that relate directly to the subdivision, traffic, water, safety, and sidewalks? How soon do those start one before the other, or simultaneously?
A lot of the projects that I described in terms of the 52nd improvements, and the sort of more regional traffic studies are ongoing right now, and have been essentially since the bond was approved last year. So, as you know, those aren't, those capital investments aren't fast projects, but they sort of come hand in hand. Developers are required to start their public improvements, so their perimeter improvements and their drainage, before they're doing vertical construction, and then sort of as they're doing vertical construction. We'll have, that subdivision improvement agreement that you addressed earlier will specify what has to be in place before they can get a certificate of occupancy. Certainly, all the drainage improvements would have to be in place. I think, Dave, you can maybe specify, but right now, the site experiences a lot of overlock drainage. It's just sort of these historic flows going across the field and probably impacting folks along Tabor. There will be all new storm sewer and detention that will control that, and the developer will install that, and that will have to be completed before they're getting their certificates of occupancy. So I think a lot of this is sort of happening hand in hand, as things are moving forward on the private side and the public side, and those improvements, both for the townhomes and the, what we call the public improvements, drainage and roadways.
More simultaneously than not?
Right.
Okay. And then I have a question on the 2E money that you referenced. The four projects that are 2E money, the, this 52nd is part of that area that was for this project?
Exactly. Yes, so the bond-approved money for four projects throughout the city, the widening of Wadsworth, hook ramps at I-70 and 32nd Avenue, Anderson Park improvements, and then generally the TOD area. That was sort of the most generic project category, because we knew we could spend 12 million very quickly on the variety of projects. But as we've looked at sort of what should those projects be, 52nd has risen to the top as one that will bite off sooner than later. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, just related, since we are talking about a subdivision in, on a lot, on a property that is zoned MUN, there's the potential to subdivide this for any number of uses, not just residential, but mixed, any sort of mixed use that's allowed by that zoning classification. Since we are looking at a propose, a proposal for a relatively high, for Wheatridge, high-density development here on this MUN land, I think traffic is a valid point to be making, and that the citizens here are raising. With that in mind, to mitigate some of the traffic issues that we're talking about, has there been any thought given to making Taft Court over to the west of this development more of the main north-south throughway between 52nd and Ridge Road and the RTD lot there as opposed to Tabor Street? Perhaps with a light there or something like that? Is that something that's been discussed?
We haven't discussed signals within the local street network, because I don't think they'd meet the warrants for that. Certainly, Taft and Tabor, once Taft opens, they'll be sort of equally sized. And then relative to the RTD parking lot, I think Taft will be probably the closer option for folks trying to get out to Ward. You know, I don't think this answer is often the preferred answer, but the desire to have an, sort of a unilateral street grid to help distribute traffic as much as possible, so it's not all on Tabor, or all on Taft, or all on one street or the other, is ultimately our preference. We know there's a terrible street network here, and not enough signals, but signalization of the local streets has not been on the table at this point.
I was just, I was just looking at the right-of-way differential between Tabor and Taft, where Tabor's noted as a 56 and 1/2 foot right-of-way, Taft Court being 75 feet. It just looks like a, the area given over to that right-of-way on Taft seems more appropriate for something with more volume.
Yeah, it's a good observation. The reason Taft is so wide is because it has already the detached sidewalks, the tree lawn, and on-street parking on both sides. So the number's a little deceiving in terms of allocation to traffic, travel lanes versus those other amenities.
I got it. So that right-of-way includes all the pedestrian parking amenities?
Correct, exactly, yeah.
I get it. And Tabor isn't so divided in terms of, in terms of what's in the right-of-way? Okay, thank you.
And then one question that I didn't ask was about the fire department, that this plan goes out for referral to the fire agencies, and they signed up on all the roadways to access? Okay. And then, one last, one last question I had, has, when you've had conversations with CDOT and their hesitancy to put in lights, did they ever talk about that putting a light sometimes doesn't always stop all accidents, that sometimes that they may cause more accidents sometimes with the streetlights?
We've, we've heard that from, from CDOT on other projects, where a light that's unanticipated, and you're, is that what you're referring to, where you're braking because you're not used to stopping at a traffic light, and then you end up with more rear-end accidents? We've heard that on other projects, that I, I am not aware of that having been made for this particular project at Ward and Ridge.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? His condition, he can, yeah, he can bring it up. Yeah.
About that condition?
Yeah, she was asking about the condition. Whoever makes the motion, that we need to, if you want to add it, we can bring it up.
You can just make it as part of, as part of the motion, just build it as another condition.
What the verbiage was.
Or you can amend it.
Yeah.
I'll just make, I'll just make an amendment.
I move to recommend approval of case number WS-1701, a request for approval of a 63-lot subdivision plat for property known as Lot 1 of Hans. Subdivision replat number one, generally addressed as 11818 West 52nd Avenue for the following reasons. All requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. The proposed plat will facilitate redevelopment of the site, consistent with a zone change and concept plan. Utility districts can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. One, all minor corrections occur prior to public hearing in front of city council. Number two, a subdivision improvement agreement can be executed with required security prior to recordation of the subdivision plat. Number three, the developer shall pay park fees at the time of plat recording in the amount of $127,362. Number four, the homeowners association covenants shall be reviewed and approved by staff prior to issuance of a public, of a building permit.
Can I offer an amendment to that, before it's seconded? An additional condition, that no access will be allowed to tract a from Tabor Street?
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open up a public hearing for case number WS-17-02, a request for approval of a six-lot subdivision plat on property zone residential two, and ask for the staff report. Wait a minute, Ken.
Department. Case number WS-17-02 is a request for approval of a six-lot subdivision for property located at 2850 and 2880 Teller Street. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and pack of materials, the subdivision regulations, and the contents of this digital presentation. All notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction to hear this case. Again, because this is a major subdivision with over five parcels proposed, Planning Commission will be providing a recommendation to city council, who will be the final authority on this plat request. And again, I would note that a neighborhood meeting is not required for a subdivision So, the parcel we're discussing for this case is shown in the image outlined in red. Teller Street runs over on the western perimeter, and then 29th Avenue is really just a lot to the north. It's got two parcels involved, which collectively equal 1.4 acres. The northern parcel, which is addressed as 2880 Teller Street, is currently vacant, but was mostly recently used for urban ag. And then the southern parcel, which is 2850 Teller, has an existing single-family house located on it, which will be demolished. The zoning on the property is R2, and our R2 zone district is considered low-density. It does allow single-family and two-family development based on the lot size. For a single-family home, a lot in the R2 zone district, the requirement is for 9,000 square feet of land area with 75 feet in width. For a duplex lot, the size increases to 12,500 square feet with 100 feet in width. And with this proposed subdivision, it is intended for the development of six single-family Again, this is the image outlined in red, and you can see the street system that surrounds the property. The yellow color, or the sort of greenish-yellow color, does represent the R2 zone district, and you can see by this image that primarily in this area, it is zoned R2. And the development is comprised of low-density residential with single-family and two-family development, with also some horse properties mixed in. So, just taking a look at some of the sites, this is the frontage, looking east, standing on Teller Street. This is the northern lot, you can see, it's primarily vacant, it has vegetation and is fenced. This is, at this location is the common lot line between the two parcels. This is the existing house located on the south that will be demolished. And this is just the view of the southern perimeter of that lot. So, we're looking at a two-law, or a two-sheet plat. Again, the first one is what I call the declaration page, or the title page, and it contains the legal description, signature blocks for property owners, recording information, and notes. The notes, among other things, contain the city's standard language regarding easements and detention upon maintenance, and also a note regarding maintenance of those common elements going to the homeowners association. So this is the second page of the plat, which does contain the layout of the subdivision. North is to the top in this situation, again. Teller Street runs over on the western perimeter, and that, and you can see that the lots, which are three on the north and three on the south, are centered around a private drive that extends east from Teller Street. And we do allow, in the zoning code, up to four units to be located on a private drive. So, lots one and four will access directly to Teller, and then the rest of the lots will have access to the private drive. With regard to fire access, there is a hammerhead being proposed in this location between lots two- two and three, and then this area down here, um, will be the storm, is tract A, and it will be the, uh, stormwater detention area. Again, the homeowners association will be, uh, responsible for maintenance of the shared access and the detention pond. And again, as, as is typical, we will want reviews, review those covenants prior to issuance of, uh, of any, uh, permits to make sure that we've got adequate provisions for maintenance. Um, so again, when new properties are created through the subdivision process, it gives us a chance to look at the surrounding streets, uh, to see if they're in conformance with the city's current standard. Teller Street is a local street and carries just local traffic, and, um, it is somewhat deficient for width, so we are asking for a one-and-a-half-foot, uh, dedication along Teller, be, uh, dedicated as the right-of-way. And in this situation, um, we are allowing the, or we are asking for fees in lieu of construction, because there is no curb gutter or sidewalk to either this, north or south of the site. Um, again, every time, anytime we have, uh, land that's developed, we, um, make sure that the historic drainage patterns are pervert, are preserved, and that the flows entering and released from the site, uh, be maintained with the pre-development conditions. Uh, historically, the site drains toward the southeast, where we do have the pond over in this counter. Um, uh, Public Works has reviewed and approved the drainage system plan, and, um, has concluded that it does meet all requirements, um, for historical release. There was, is one item of note, and that is, at the very northwest corner of Lot One, there's an existing access easement, um, that it, the beneficiary of it is the property directly to the north, um, at seventy-one ninety-eight West Twenty-ninth. It is currently paved, and it looks like the property, property owner to the north used it to access the rear of their site. The applicant has indicated that the easement will be released by separate document and the improvement removed. However, um, we did see some title commitment work, uh, that showed it wasn't included, but we need some stronger language in, including release of that property owner from that easement. And we would request that, on that issue be resolved prior to, uh, going to city council. Again, uh, we did our standard fifteen-day referral on the request. All of the, um, agencies responding have indicated that they can, uh, serve the property with improvements. That would include Century Link, uh, Consolidated Mutual. West Metro Fire has approved of the, uh, design with the hammerhead turnaround, and there's an existing hydrant on the west side of Teller that will be adequate. Uh, Parks, uh, Department will request fees in lieu of parkland, again, in this situation. Uh, Wheat Ridge Sanitation can, uh, serve the property with an existing sanitary sewer main. Uh, Excel Energy can serve, and, uh, Wheat Ridge Public Works has reviewed and approved the plat and drainage report. So, uh, we are given a recommendation of approval, uh, with one, two, three, four, five conditions included, that have been itemized in your recommended motion. So, that would conclude the staff comments, and there are questions, we will answer those.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner Bowden?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Commissioner Dorsey?
No question.
Commissioner Kinsey?
No question.
Commissioner Voss?
I do have two questions. The paragraph before onsite drainage talks about the Public Works is asking for fees in lieu of construction of the public improvements. So, the developer is paying the city through Public Works for not developing the curb and gutter?
I'll let Dave answer that one.
In situations where it has been determined that it's not beneficial to the public, um, to construct the curb gutter and sidewalk as required by code, um, we typically require fees in lieu of construction of those improvements instead of actually constructing. And in this case, since there's, uh, no curb and gutter downstream of the subject property, it's been determined that that may actually produce a hardship for the people to the south, because it'll collect the runoff and, and drain it onto their, their property instead of maintaining the historical pattern as it is right now, which is, is low-impacted in the neighbors. Um, as far as the sidewalk goes, since there's, again, no sidewalk north or south, um, you know, we contemplated having them build it, but again, then it would essentially be a sidewalk to nowhere, so rather, rather than doing that, we, we decided to take the fees in lieu.
Okay.
Does that?
It answers a little bit better, it just seems a little odd. Anyway, um, Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec Dis Department will require fees in lieu of parkland dedication, but you didn't mention the amount.
The total amount, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars per, I don't have that exact figure right in front of me. Um, it would be twenty-five dollars, or twenty-five hundred dollars and some change, um, times five. We would give them a credit for that existing house.
It's.
Is it in there?
Yeah, under twelve thousand.
Okay, that, yeah, that sounds right.
That's, thank you.
Commissioner Weaver? I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Rekert. Let's hear from the, uh, applicant, if the applicant wants to make a presentation. Otherwise, um, if you don't have a presentation, we can see if the commissioners have questions.
I don't have a large presentation. Uh, my name is Baron Woxman, thank you for your time this evening.
Could you state your address to you?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Could you state your name and address?
Oh, Baron Woxman, current address, six-twenty-eight Laporta Avenue, Fort Collins, Colorado.
Thank you.
Um, also twenty-four eighty Xavier Street. So, uh, I just want to address the easement issue. When we purchased this particular property, the young lady to the north that had the easement, we purchased it from her. She was contractually obligated to release that easement and has done so. So, we, we've provided that paperwork, it's on the title work, we're, if we need stronger language, but it's been released by both the, um, the former owner and by the title company, it's already listed in there. And that, that picture's a little old, so that, that asphalt's actually no longer there. So, whatever we need to do to, um, get any stronger language, we're happy to do, and any other minor corrections, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioner Bowden? Commissioner Bowden? Commissioner Dorsey? Commissioner, excuse me. Commissioner Voss?
No questions.
Commissioner Weaver? I, I have no questions, thank you. Okay, I will now open up the citizens forum. Um, if, let's see here, I have a roster. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Ron Olson. Do you wish to come forward?
When I signed it, I thought I was just getting my name on this. Uh, my name is Ron Olson, I own the property at seventy-two-hundred West Twenty-ninth, which is Twenty-ninth and Teller. I guess my only concern about this, having grown up in that house sixteen-five years ago, uh, it's changed a little bit. Uh, it used to be, uh, cows and horses and, uh, goats in that field. Uh, the only concern I have, especially in the process right before this one, is traffic, drainage. Obviously, this is quite a bit smaller than the other one, so, I mean, the only thing I, and I understand from this that the, all the access to this, these six houses is going to be on to Teller? I vote for Twenty-ninth, because I have a, a grandson in that street, and there is a massive amount of accidents at Twenty-ninth and Teller that have not changed over the years. I can remember five or six fatalities there when I was growing up, and since, uh, I've rented that house to my son, he's had cars in his front yard three times in five years from accidents. So, you know, that's my only concern. I, I mean, I know that you can't stop progress, and it's a vacant lot, it's not, for the most part, doing anybody any good, so, I mean, I don't mind it, but, like I said, i- i- if my vote counts, which probably doesn't, I'd say, uh, it should go to Twenty-ninth and not out on to Teller. Teller, right there, is kind of like a country street. Like you said, there's no sidewalks, and there never has been. And, I think, if this street goes out on to Teller, all of those headlights are going to be pointing into the house that's directly in back of our house. So, they're probably not very happy either, so. At any rate, that's about all I had to say.
Thank you. Clarissa Woxman? Okay. Greg Squires?
I'm Greg Squires, and I live at seventy-nine, West Twenty-ninth Avenue, which is the west property of mine directly above the east property line of that development. And when I bought my house, there were horses there, and it was nice to go out and talk to them in the night, you know, and they'd go over and hang out, but I, I know you can't stop progress. My question is, the drainage. The previous owner did some regrading in there, and it flooded my backyard. Now, the guy that owns it brought in piles and piles and yards and yards of dirt, and has raised the property, I don't know how much, but considerably higher than it was. So, I'm just wondering what the drainage situation is going to be. Am I going to be flooded even worse, or what's going to happen there? That's all.
Okay, thank you. Byron Wadzeman? Oh, sorry. No, that's, that's okay. Dennis Hatfield? I think he left. Christopher Riley? Okay. Is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to come up? Come forward, please.
Hi, my name's Nikki Jorgensen, I live at two-six-five-three Teller Street, um, just a few houses down from where all this is being discussed. And, um, like they said, we can't stop development. I mean, we moved in there about nine, ten years ago. My, one of the main reasons was because I have two small children. We like the idea of living with horses and goats and sheep in the city. And to hear, I just need to say that traffic on Teller is horrendous right now. I live between the two speed bumps, so technically, my house should be really slow, and people come flying through, and you just hear cars going boom-boom, boom-boom, boom-boom. Um, we already have city buses coming down Teller Street, which I don't even know what they're doing, because they don't pick anybody up there. I've complained eighty times, nobody cares. But I just wanted to say, with this traffic, I know it's a residential, but it's very much become a thoroughfare, because people want off of Wadsworth. And so, as I was hearing with this Fifty-second, I don't go to Fifty-second, I, I create a little small world right here on Twenty-ninth. But it, it scares me, um, with having two dogs and two small children. It's scary enough to let them go in the front yard with cars, just flying, and if my puppy moves at all, you know, a car's going to just whack it. So, I just wanted to throw out there, I'm opposed, um, personally, and I know it doesn't matter, but please take a look at that traffic, and having all those cars come out right to those houses on Teller, it's just asking for trouble. So, just as a mom, I just want to say boo, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to speak? I will close the citizens forum. So, the, the questions are traffic, let's go over that one, I know there's six homes, I don't know how much traffic that's going to be with the...
Usually for low-density residential, that you assume like ten vehicle trips per day, per house.
Okay. So, s- sixty? Okay. And then drainage, um, I, I don't know what was done in the past, but, uh, since this is going through the, the city, that, uh, everything will have to be approved, n- n- not only by the city engineer, but the, the developers, um, civil engineer will have to stamp and sign it, and adhere to state regulations as well, as far as drainage patterns and...
Yeah, I took a look at the, or I actually reviewed and approved the drainage report, and as Meredith stated in her, in her presentation, the, the site historically drains to the southeast, and per state water law, we adhered to historical drainage patterns with the design of this, and, um, that's why the tract you see is in the southeast portion there, to capture the runoff from the site. Um, actually, that, um, water quality facility will add not only a water quality component before it's released, um, historic pattern-wise, but it's also going to reduce the amount of runoff from the site dramatically. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's, it's like seventy or eighty percent reduction. So, it should actually improve the, the drainage into the neighborhood. And I, I wasn't aware of any fill brought into the site, obviously, because, um, we, we get to look at the, the site as it's presented currently, and not, over, over the years, but, um, the drainage as proposed will work just fine.
Um, in response to Mr. Squires' comment about the fill, we have, uh, forwarded code enforcement complaints about some of the items. We, we did, i- it's not a lot of fill, but there were also some dead brush and debris issues, and I think there was an RV, or was it an RV parked out there, so...
Okay. Um, and then as far as the, um, there's some speed humps on Teller. That's something with Public Works that I guess I'd have to look at, if they need to add more, but, um, uh, my understanding is that, uh, at some point, Wadsworth will be redeveloped, and potentially that will eliminate some of the... Some of the, some of the traffic on Teller, but... Um, are there any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
Could you just discuss the, the Twenty-ninth versus Teller? I thought, uh, a few things were, good thoughts were brought up regarding, um, where, that, the access to this space, because right now, it does dump out on Teller. Is there, uh...
They wouldn't be able to access Teller unless they had property there, or they, oh, yes, sorry. They, they wouldn't be able to access Twenty-ninth unless either they brought, bought a property and tore the house down.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so they don't have direct...
It's not, oh, sorry.
No, no.
I didn't understand, thank you.
I wanted to ask, with reference to the curb and gutter now, the, um, developer's going to give the, um, city, uh, the dollars that it would cost to put in curb and gutter. The properties to the south of this, and there's another two properties, south on Teller, on the same side of the street, that are about the same, their agriculture at this particular point have been. In fact, one of the properties, I rented, uh, a number of the chicken coops that they had on that property. When these all eventually get developed, I feel there should be curb and gutter put in for the whole thing. Does the city hold that money back and put in curb and gutters when the demand for curb and gutters for the rest of Ta, uh, Teller Street, uh, comes about?
No, when the funds are, are taken, or fees in lieu of construction for any of these projects, it goes into, um, a sidewalk fund, a development sidewalk fund that's kept, um, avail, those funds are available for a year, and after, at the end of that calendar year, they're dispersed into the general fund. Now, we're trying to get that changed, but a- as I believe today, it's still that same process.
Because I think we're going to be talking about the same thing, uh, on these two other properties, south of this particular property we're talking tonight, and it's going to be the same thing, and they'll... be the same thing, and they'll never have curb and gutter and sidewalk on Teller Street here at all. I mean, it's, I live on a cul-de-sac, and as the eight homeowners on the cul-de-sac way back when, we wanted curb and gutter, and we went to the city and we got curb and gutter. We ended up paying for it over a ten-year period or a five-year period, I can't remember what it was, paid the city to put that in and get the drainage right, and put in a real good storm sewer at the end of the, at the end of the cul-de-sac where the low point. Eventually, these things have to be addressed in the city. I mean, we read all the time about how Denver is so far behind on sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, that, you know, it's going to be a trillion dollars before they ever get it handled. And our city is a hodgepodge of curb and gutters and sidewalks, and, I mean, once we start a project, we ought to have enough foresight to say, okay, we'll put curb and gutter and sidewalk here, so it's going to be a dead-end sidewalk, but eventually, this is all going to be developed in the next ten years, probably. And so, the whole block would need curb and gutter. I mean, should this be done the way we're doing it, or, that's my question. I mean, looking to the future.
Well, it's true that most of the time, we can only get a piece at a time. We talked to the developer, and we thought it would be best if they gave us funds, because often, when you put curb and gutter in and there's none to either side, sometimes it makes it worse for the people who are downstream. And, but you have a valid point.
But downstream is going to be developed, because it's vacant land, most of it. I mean, that's all I'm trying to say. Well, there, yeah, there is some horse properties, but you got some big vacant land, I mean, you got this one just to the south, and the one south of that is vacant.
There isn't a curb and gutter at Twenty-sixth to Thirty-eighth.
Right.
So, what's one of the second?
Well, I think we made them put in curb and gutter there on Teller, where they did the development on the northeast corner, when they put in those houses there.
That was, that was because there was sidewalk adjacent to both of the others on there.
Right, right. Well, that's all I'm, I just wanted to bring that up.
Are there any other questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Chair, I move to recommend approval of case number WS-17-02, a request for approval of a six-lot major subdivision plot for property located at two-eight-five-oh and two-eight-eight-oh Teller Street for the following reasons. The proposed lots meet or exceed the R2 Zone District regulations for single-family construction. All requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. The proposed street system and drainage design provide a logical development pattern for the new parcels. And utility districts conserve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. Condition one, all minor corrections occur prior to public hearing in front of the city council. Condition two, the nine-foot-by-fifty-five-point-five-foot access easement on Lot One be resolved prior to public hearing in front of city council. Condition three, subdivision improvement agreement be executed whereby all private infrastructure improvements are in place prior to issuance of building permits for individual lots. Condition four, the developer pay parks fees at this time of plot recording in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Condition five, homeowners association covenants be reviewed and approved by staff prior to issuance of building permits.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to mention that some of us in District One really love not having curb and gutter all the time. We like that rural stuff. Anyhow, that's just my thoughts.
I think on the sidewalk issue, you brought up some good points, but the biggest concern is if you put in a sidewalk, you have to make sure that you have an ADA ramp to connect it, and then what's going to happen is people are going to want to cross the street, and so when there's the dead end, you know, then are we, are they going to cross mid-block? Is that going to be safe? It won't be ADA accessible. And sometimes that happens on projects, they'll put like ballerines on the end, and it just terminates right there, and it's a little frustrating if you don't know, well, it deadens, and I got to turn around or something, but I see some concerns, and it sounds like Mr. Brosman was, had some good points about how things could change, potentially, so, of earmarking those funds.
I mean, we had the same thing on Kipling before we put the bridge across the river. I mean, it dead-ended, I mean, in several, two or three places. And it was tough to walk, and so that whole Kipling from Thirty-second on down has, you know, been done to the point where the sidewalks are in, you got curb and gutter, you got all this stuff that the city really needs.
Is there any other discussion? Call for vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. The next item is, I open the public hearing for case number ZO-A-17-04, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of Laws Regarding Small Cell Commercial Mobile Radial Service Facilities, and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, good evening. I don't have a PowerPoint for you tonight, this one should be pretty quick. For the record, Lauren Michelak, the planning manager in the community development department. Some of you may recall, last month, actually, Mr. Dahl, the city attorney, gave you a little bit of a preview of what this ordinance would be. Earlier in the year, in the summer, you reviewed an ordinance to allow small cell facilities in the public right-of-way. That's a request that went through the state legislature, and essentially, you may remember, we had discussed that these are sort of small antennas that extend an existing network, and you most often see them attached to like a traffic signal pole or to a streetlight. So, sometimes it means the pole is a little bigger, or you'll see like a canister kind of on top of a streetlight. Evidently, when we adopted local legislation as a follow-up to the state legislation, we used the same definition from the state, and theirs included an error. You've seen in the ordinance the term personal wireless service facility means actually any type of cell tower. So, it was obviously an omission to include that, or an error to include that here. We would not allow full-blown cell tower in the right-of-way under the small cell facility. So, the purpose of this ordinance tonight is simply to correct that error, strike that sentence, and then be able to sort of enact this ordinance as we had originally intended for just those smaller facilities.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'll open up the citizens forum. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? No? Okay, I will close the citizens forum. I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Small Cell CMRS Facilities.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Is there any old business that we need to address?
No.
I don't think so. We can move on. Is there old business?
I just had a question in reference to old business. If I could have the proposed cell in the right-of-way of the automated chicken sign that we discussed last meeting.
Duly noted.
Sorry, that was an inside planning commission joke.
Okay. And then we have new business, the bylaw adoption?
Yes, so also, last month, the commission reviewed a draft of an update to the bylaws. The bylaws are essentially the rules and procedures of operation for a board and commission, and each of the city's boards has their own set of bylaws. Yours had not been updated in, I think, ten or eleven years, so we discussed a few of the updates that are consistent with best practice and sort of the current practice, and some of the city codes. We made all the modifications that were recommended by you at the study session. There is one additional modification that I want to present, I'm going to pass this out, and then I'll describe it really quickly as it relates to the attendance paragraph.
We need to pass him down.
So, it was brought to our attention by the clerk's office, actually, that there is a section of city code that addresses the attendance policy for all of the city's boards and commissions. Your bylaws included a provision of what to do if there were too many absences that was inconsistent with city code. So, in the event that you would have an issue with attendance with a commission member, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion in terms of whether code or bylaws trumped each other. So, you'll see on this sheet that I've handed out, the existing language has been, has the strike-through, and the proposed language is underlined, and essentially, we would, there's a distinction in the code about excused versus unexcused absences. We don't make that determination when you say you can't make a meeting, but if you were to miss twenty-five percent of meetings in a calendar year, then the commission as a whole essentially would confirm whether those were excused or unexcused, and you may be eligible for being removed from the commission in whatever circumstance. So, we've requested, and will request of all of our boards to make sure we're in line, that we're noting the reason for absence if something were to become sort of a continuing issue, and then made the code reference here as appropriate to Section Two-Fifty-three.
Thank you. That was actually a question that I was going to ask Mr. Dahl about. Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Who, I don't see where you're stating who is going to make that determination of excused/unexcused twenty-five percent.
So, there's a, the provision in the code says that excuse absences may include, and I think it was like illness, death in the family, or emergency, but ultimately, if there was an issue of somebody being gone for twenty-five percent, the board would decide whether they were excu, whether they were considered to be excused. So, essentially, you assume that they are, let me read this, "Anytime commissioner is absent," shall cease to be a member of the board unless the absences are determined excused and are voted upon by the majority of the members of the commission. So, that would be you all who make that.
So, do we need to, do we need to make a motion on that to approve?
Yes. So, unless there's any further questions or amendments, what I provided on that handout at the bottom is a motion that would approve the updated bylaws that we had discussed last month, were included in this packet, and then would also incorporate this amendment related to attendance.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, recommended motion. I move to approve the updated bylaws with the following additional amendment, that Section Twenty-Two be revised as presented for the consistency with city code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
I have one comment. While I was at another planning commission at a different municipality, they had like an LED timer up above, you know, on the wall, that would automatically like countdown. Has the city ever considered something that for public comment?
No, I believe...
Like an LED countdown timer?
You don't have a rule on the specific number of minutes. You can enforce that if you have a lot of people. I believe during city council meetings, Janelle must have a timer, because there's a light that only the speaker can see on the podium of when it's, the three minutes have expired, if I'm correct. But I have not heard about a timer. It would be helpful to sort of see, I've seen that, too, at like school board meetings also, where sort of everyone sort of knows where the clock is, you know?
Yeah.
I can ask.
Are there any other items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Call for vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.